The Board of Education of the BCSD to order, please stand for the pledge. Thank you. Oh, and I'm sorry, but please stand again for a moment of silence for Thomas Gallimore Rhodes, former Beacon High School student. Thank you. I think your roll call, please. Here. Here. Here.
Here.
Excused.
Here.
Here. Here, thank you. Matt, can you review the fire exits, please?
Exits are in the back of the LGI.
Thank you. Open to the public. Is there anyone that is here to make a public statement? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to move on to our workshop. Tonight, we're recognizing our retirees and our tenure recipients.
Hi, everyone. So I have an order where you can move it around, but I'm going to start tonight with Deb Call. We'd like to -- I put you on the spot, Deb. Who'd like to speak about?
Well, tonight, this year, it was John's last year mechanic. I didn't know what, where to start really with him. I've known John since the eighties, but I won't talk about that. When I came here to Beacon and I saw John there, he made me feel very welcome. We reminisced about a lot of past. And then, as I got more comfortable with him, I learned with John that don't give out the wrong bus. That's for sure. John is one of the best mechanics anybody will ever, ever have. He took care of the Beacon buses with pride, even checked our charter buses, as I've heard stories that he's turned people away not to put our children on unsafe buses. He is the best, and I want to congratulate him on his retirement and see if he'll come back next year.
Come on down, John.
Congratulations, John.
Whoops. Thank you.
How many years was it in Beacon?
Thirty-five and a half.
Oh, my gosh. Thank you.
Crystal, would you like to be next?
Sure.
Good evening. My name is Crystal, and I'm the principal at JV Forestal Elementary School. And we have two retirees. The first is not able to be here tonight, but I'm just going to share a little bit about her, Debbie Waggy. Debbie Waggy has served as a teacher with Beacon for eighteen years. She helped to get the Lego League going at JVF, and if you know anything about the Lego League and JVF, and specifically Debbie, it was something she was very passionate about. She also worked hard to make sure we maintain community relationships with local partners. She was a member of our family and community engagement committee. Instructionally, she was a strong teacher and instilled a love for learning in all of her students. Thank you so much for your leadership, Debbie, and the love that you provided to our students. Congratulations on retiring. Okay. Next up, I have Darcy Clayton. Darcy is retiring from her position as a speech pathologist in Beacon. She has served within the Beacon City School Districts for twenty-five years. Yes, yes, yes. And while these last two years, she spent them at RMS, prior to that, she previously served in the speech pathologist role at the elementary level, where she spent most of her career. We will love and, we love, excuse me, and will miss you, Darcy, but we know that you have left an imprint on all of the students and staff you worked with at Forestal specifically and throughout the district. As you enter into this next chapter of your journey, we wish you the best and hope that you enjoy every moment of it. Congratulations on retiring.
Katie Biorde. Hello, everyone. My name's Katie Biorde, and I'm the principal at Sargent Elementary School. I'm going to start with my teacher, who's my support staff, who is receiving tenure tonight, Camille Cortina. I'm so thrilled to award Camille Cortina with tenure tonight. She is a dedicated social worker, and she has done a lot for our students and families over the years at Sargent. One of Camille's best qualities is her flexible attitude and her willingness to make herself available to any student at any time. She gets down in the trenches with us, and she's a total team player. I'm excited to watch her grow over the course of her career. The students and staff are very lucky to have her at Sargent. So now, on to my retirees. Our first retiree is Karen Grant. I was really grateful for Karen's knowledge of the building and staff when I first transitioned to Sargent last summer as the new principal. Although we didn't get to work together for very long, she ended up retiring in October. She was really helpful and welcoming to me. I think Brian and I would both agree that, you know, we wish her the best in her retirement and to thank her for her years of service to the students, staff, and families at Sargent. She's not able to be with us tonight either, but I guess we'll give it up for Karen.
Are you sending us to her, Meg?
Another one I don't see in the crowd, I don't think, is Jerry Landisi. Jerry retired in January, and since then, he has been the busiest retired person I know. He has been subbing a lot in our building, which makes it really hard for it to sink in that he isn't ours anymore. What struck me about Jerry when I first started working with him this year at Sargent is that his personality is like the perfect blend of serious and jokester. I think that the staff and students would agree that Jerry's presence at Sargent makes us all feel safe because we know how good he is at his job, but he's also so approachable, and he makes everyone laugh, and his rapport with the students is like second to none. Whenever you finally stop taking subbing jobs at Sargent, which we hope is never, we hope that you find some time to relax, Jerry.
Betsy Purdy is also not with us tonight. She is retiring from her position as a classroom aide. For the past two years, she has worked in kindergarten, and prior to that, she worked as a one-to-one aide. Betsy is one of those people that just makes you feel happier and better by just being around her. She was a steady and calming presence around our littlest learners at Sargent and a mentor to all of her colleagues. She is already enjoying her retired life. Her and her husband moved to Florida on Saturday, so we wish you the best, Betsy. Thank you for everything.
And then I'm going to call Cassandra Orser up. We have another person who doesn't know how to retire, and that's Pat Hassabis. Cassandra was unable to deliver her retirement speech when she retired the first time in COVID, so she'll go next. You want to go first or second?
I'll go first.
Okay.
Thanks to Google.
In order of time.
I was able to revise it so that it works for tonight. So in 2020, the Glenham family said farewell to one of its shining employees, and at that time, we did not know she would return to the district for another three years. At the time of her initial plan to retire, Ms. Hassabis was the administrative school secretary with the Beacon City School District for over fourteen years, and thirteen of them were at Glenham. I had the honor of working with Pat over the first four years as I transitioned into elementary school and relied on her as a guide and confidant. Pat's welcoming and approachable presence is missed at Glenham as she always greeted students, parents, teachers, and staff each day with a smile and a kind word. Her encouraging spirit has been an inspiration to all students and adults alike. Mrs. Hassabis was instrumental in the start of our school's Kindness is Contagious program, which has been an integral piece of the Glenham's character education program. The students at Glenham were always so excited to come to the office to bring down their morning folders, to get their kindness stars, or birthday ribbons and pencils just to visit with Mrs. Hassabis. On her farewell walk through the building, teachers and staff members smiled, students flocked to her for hugs, and just like we did then, now that we are in June, three years later, we all continue to wish Pat well and hope that she can soon retire for real and embark upon her travel plans and time with her family.
So I'll just skip the part in my speech where I wrote that she worked at Glenham and move to, you know, Pat's been filling a lot of clerical gaps since her retirement from Glenham. We have this little bulletin board outside of the main office at Sargent where the original intent was to introduce, with our faces on it, introduce the students to the staff in the main office at the beginning of the year, but it kind of morphed into this story of how the changes in the main office have happened over the year. And Jerry and Karen are on this boat called the SS Retirement, kind of sailing off the bulletin board, and on the bulletin board is Pat flying in with life preservers to save me and Meg. And I really couldn't think of like a better imagery to encapsulate what Pat has done for us this year. Pat and her systems, her forward thinking, her one-liners, and her warm, loving spirit. She's taught me so much, the ins and outs of an elementary school. She's given me the confidence this year as a brand-new principal, teach me what to do, and I would be completely lost without her this year. So thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, and now, I have two, one teacher and one nurse, who are like institutions at Sargent that I don't feel qualified really to give their retirement speech, but I'm going to do my best. Jane Servon is a veteran teacher of thirty-plus years, all of which was spent at Sargent. She is a natural leader, everyone's greatest cheerleader, and everyone's advocate. She started her career as a special educator, and during that time, she was instrumental in pushing the district and supporting a more inclusive model, and she actually piloted the district's first, very first ICT class. After decades in the special education realm, she changed tenure tracks, which is a very brave thing to do as a teacher, and she took her talents into the general education area where she offered the same amount of fierce dedication and love for her students. I will always be grateful to Jane for supporting me through my transition here at Sargent this year, and there is absolutely no way to fill her void, but we're all really excited for her to enjoy this next chapter in her life. So congratulations, Jane.
I just want to thank the board as well for being amazing through my thirty years of teaching and for my children as well.
And lastly, Carmella Walden, AKA Everyone's Nona. So she doesn't go by Mrs. Walden. She's really like Nona at Sargent. She's our school nurse. She also spent her whole entire career at Sargent. Not only does she make the kids feel better when they see her, but she makes all the adults feel better, too. Carmella even took my temperature a few times this school year, you know, even though I didn't necessarily want it. Aside from being a skilled healthcare professional, she's a steady hand, a calming presence. She creates a safe environment for everyone. I'm going to miss her stories about the old country and her principal pep talks. She is going to be in full-time Nona mode in retirement, which is going to be probably her greatest job yet. And she's going to be caring for her new grandson, Miles, and we are just so happy that, I'm so happy that I got to spend a year with you. I wish it was thirty, but I'll take what I can get.
Thank you, everybody.
I don't believe Mrs. Taylor is here, but I am delighted to share about Mrs. Taylor as she retires this year after twenty-six years in the Beacon City School District. I have been most fortunate to have worked with Mrs. Taylor over the past seven years at Glenham. She has been a mentor for me. She excels in her ability to work with and resolve conflicts between students, staff, and parents alike. She has a focus on inclusion and creating an environment where all students feel comfortable and confident in their learning. Mrs. Taylor maintains high expectations for all students while also being compassionate and loving. Mrs. Taylor was one of the most innovative teachers during COVID, fully embracing the new world of technology. She is always interested in new methods of teaching to ensure she is connected and engaged with her students. In my time at Glenham, Mrs. Taylor was also the advisor of Glenham Student Council and the book club. She and the students worked to support the greater Glenham community. She has organized food and clothing drives, the blood drive at Glenham each year, created public service announcements on our morning news show, and supported the recycling program at the school. Congratulations, Mrs. Taylor, and enjoy all the beach vacations in your retirement. Next up is Mr. Werba for tenure. I would like to share my recommendation for Mr. Michael Werba for tenure in the area of elementary special education for the Beacon City School District. Mr. Werba is a valuable member of both
Mr. Werba is a valuable member of both our school and our community. Mr. Werba began at Sergeant Elementary School as a teaching assistant and then accepted a teaching position there. The following year, Mr. Werba joined us at Glenham Elementary School in a special class setting, and in his time at Glenham, he has taught first, second, and third grade. Mr. Werba completed his master's degree at Mount St. Mary's College, and he has also obtained his professional teaching certification. Mr. Werba fosters a therapeutic setting for students and adults in his classroom and has taught his students how to code using a commercial 3D printer that he received through a grant. The school has benefited from the fidget and sensory tactile toys that have been created. They are all over Glenham, and Mr. Werba is currently working to be a Google trainer and participates on the gardening club, the safety team, and then voluntarily co-facilitates the chess club, where he has designed and 3D-printed all of the awards. He was also recognized by Susan Serena this year as an A-plus teacher. It is because of these reasons Mr. Werba receives my recommendation for tenure to the Beacon City School District. And Mrs. Karaskio. I would like to recommend Mrs. Karaskio for tenure in the area of elementary education for the Beacon City School District. Mrs. Karaskio began teaching at Glenham in 2018 as a first-grade teacher. Since then, she moved to pre-K, and she's continued to facilitate learning opportunities for our youngest learners and was incredible teaching four-year-olds virtually during the COVID pandemic. At Glenham, Mrs. Karaskio volunteered to coach double dutch in a morning clinic. She is a member of the PTO board, was the cheerleading coach at RMS, and has been trained in QFT, IEP writing, responsive classroom, and is a leader in foundations at the pre-K level. Mrs. Karaskio completed her master's degree from Lehman College in literacy studies, and she has also obtained her professional teaching certification. She has facilitated learning opportunities for her colleagues and created a curriculum plan that is both inclusive and developmentally appropriate. It is because of these reasons that Mrs. Rafaela Karaskio receives my recommendation for tenure in the Beacon City School District. Thank you, congratulations. Corey Dwyer.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Corey Dwyer, I'm the principal of the high school. So we have three tenure recipients and two retirees, so I'll start with our three recipients of tenure. Veronica Acevedo. I'm very pleased to recognize Ms. Acevedo on achieving tenure as a school social worker at Beacon High School. Ms. Acevedo has worked as a social worker at BHS for the past four years. She is highly respected and beloved by her students, who see her as a trusted and supportive adult that they could count on. She's often called upon to handle challenging student matters, and she does so with grace, compassion, and understanding. She works proactively with community agencies and organizations to support students and has a strong understanding of the resources available to students, staff, and families. I am confident that Veronica will continue to make a positive difference in the lives of our students and that she will continue to be an outstanding member of our student services team. Congratulations.
Mark Dickinson. Mr. Dickinson has distinguished himself as a dedicated and effective instructor at Beacon High School, where he's taught a number of English classes over the past four years. This past school year, he assumed leadership of our rigorous Advanced Placement Language and Composition Program following Ms. Gaspar's retirement. I spoke about our concerns about how somebody was going to fill her shoes at last year's retirement ceremony, and we're so grateful that Mr. Dickinson has stepped up as he had to do a great job at that program this year. Mr. Dickinson's lessons are exceptionally well-planned and highly engaging, and his students consistently perform well and outperform their peers on standardized assessments. Mark is an active and engaged member of our school community. During the 2019-20 school year, he advised our journalism club and organized several digital journalism Zoom conferences at the start of the COVID pandemic. He's also advised our investment club and helped to organize a semester and summer-long funny money investment competition with over 40 student and faculty participants. Most recently, he is helping to launch the garden club with the intention of setting up a functional school garden, which exists right now underneath the windows of his classroom at the front of the school. I'm grateful that Mr. Dickinson found Beacon after he began his career in New York City, and I'm excited to see him receive tenure. I know that he will continue to be a wonderful asset for our district, and I'm so glad to have him as a member of our English department.
When I learned last summer that we would be in need of a band teacher at the high school just a couple of days before the school year was to begin, I had a few moments of panic before I was reminded about the talented and beloved band teacher across the street. Thank you, Mr. Saltish, for letting us take her. We still put her through the wringer, though it became clear to us within minutes of her interview that Samantha Ryan would be the perfect fit for our music students and program, as evidenced by the love she received from students when I posted the announcement on our Instagram page. Ms. Ryan leads our concert band, pep band, pit orchestra, and jazz band. She helped to launch our AP Music Theory program this year, and she will again win her popular met, Marching Band Camp, this summer. If you saw our band perform this year, you would undoubtedly agree that we have both incredibly talented students and a super talented conductor. We're really excited for what's to come with Samantha at the helm. Congratulations.
Retirees, Mrs. Idusu, Helen Idusu is not here tonight, but for the past 23 years, Helen has worked as a foreign language teacher in the Beacon City School District, most recently at Beacon High School. Mrs. Idusu is known for her exceptional work ethic. She's often one of the last teachers in the building, sometimes until 7:00 or 8:00 o'clock at night. She's a dedicated teacher who holds students to high expectations, and she's experienced a great deal of success at BHS. We wish her the very best in her retirement. Okay, one more. I am privileged to say a few words about our second retiree, who Mr. Giometta will also speak about. Over the past 37 years, Cindy Pomerico has made a profound and lasting impact on two generations of Beacon students. We're often reminded of the Maya Angelou quote about people forgetting what you said and what you did, but always remembering how you made them feel. There is nobody who better embodies this than Ms. Pomerico. I was fortunate to have her as a teacher in high school, and every so often when I'm asked by my former classmates about who is still going strong up here, is Mr. LaFaro still teaching with the football? Is Ms. Luca Rini still singing songs about the quadratic formula? And when the conversation turned to Ms. P., the response from those who had or knew her is always, "Oh, I love Ms. P." Day in, day out, year in, year out, she has shown up to work with a smile on her face and endless compassion in her heart. To know Ms. P. is to know that she cares. She's an irreplaceable teacher and an exemplary colleague, a selfless and supportive leader among our faculty, who quietly reminds us by example to bring our best every day. This is a truly bittersweet moment for us. Ms. Pomerico will miss beyond what words could possibly express, but we are all so happy for her as she begins this next chapter of her life, and we are grateful to move forward in our own lives and careers, holding on to the lessons that she taught us along the way. Congratulations to that girl.
Thanks for stealing my lines, Corey. No, but just to piggyback, I'm John Giometta, Director of Athletics in the school district. A couple other details about Coach P. and her career. Seventeen years as a varsity volleyball coach, including 100 wins, 2001 Poughkeepsie Journal Coach of the Year, four seasons as a varsity basketball coach, four seasons as the varsity softball coach, and most recently, the head coach of our first-ever unified bowling team. Notably, she's also worked at every building in the district aside from South Avenue. She's been around, and like I said, 37 years in the district. That's quite an accomplishment. Despite all these amazing accomplishments, I feel that Coach P.'s greatest impact has ultimately been felt by the faculty and staff that have been fortunate enough to work with her at some point in their careers. Coach P. is a true leader and a mentor to all staff members in our district. Whether it's a simple smile, a greeting in the morning, or allowing you to vent and brainstorm ideas, she can always be relied on and trusted to help guide you in the right direction. We're all lucky to have the opportunity to learn from her, and I know it gets said often, but her shoes are going to be extremely hard to fill. On behalf of the PE and Athletics Program at Beacon, I want to thank you for your dedication you've given us, but most importantly, I want to thank you for the positivity, sense of humor, and for making us all better people. Thank you, Coach. It's going to be a tough one to follow up, Van Vors. But next, I'd like to announce the tenure recognition of Matt Van Vors, phys ed teacher at South Avenue Elementary. I'd like to congratulate Matt on receiving tenure in the area of PE. Matt has worked with us for the past four years at the elementary level and has recently made his home at South Avenue. During this time, he's coached modified volleyball, JV basketball, most recently took on the position of varsity golf coach. In addition to athletic contributions, Matt has proven to be a solid leader in our phys ed department. He is hands-on with district initiatives such as our Girls in Sports Day and is always advocating to increase opportunities for physical education at the elementary PE level. He's well-respected by his colleagues and has proven to step up to make the experiences for our students safe, structured, and fun. On behalf of the PE and Athletics Programs in Beacon, I want to thank Matt for his dedication to our students, and I look forward to working with him for years to come. Matt, congratulations.
Next up is Mr. Saltish, who I know is in the building. I think he's outside in the hallway.
He was on a field trip.
I know. He made it in time. Well, did you want me to scare them and tell them I didn't see you? Um, whatever. I'll work with you. Whatever you want to start with. It's up to you.
Well, we'll start with you.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you. Brian Saltish, principal at the middle school, and yes, we just got back from Lake Compounds a little while ago. It was a wonderful day. So I'm going to start with tenure recipients. The first recipient for tenure was on the trip with me, and that is one of our teaching assistants at Rombaut Middle School, and that is Mr. Joe Ginjulis, who's standing right over there. Joe asked if he could drive to Lake Compounds because he didn't want to miss the ceremony. I said, "Well, I'm the one that's giving the speech about you, so if you want to come, it'll be all right." So he rode with us. Joe came to us from South Avenue, and from the time that he got to Rombaut, he was an instant icon of the students. If they were running an election for principal of the building, Joe would, hands down, beat me in a vote by our student body. He goes to every event we have. He runs our esports program. He goes to student activities. He chaperones. He's the union rep in our building. He does wonderful things in the classroom. He works in our special class with Miss Woolley. He comes in every day to work with a smile on his face, asking our secretary what he can do, how he can help. So people like Mr. Ginjulis are completely invaluable. Like, if we had more Joes in our building, every day would be easy, so I thank him for everything he does, and I hope he stays at Rombaut forever. So, Joe, come on down. By the way, we were the first middle school to run esports, thanks to Mr. Ginjulis. The next person that we have up for tenure at Rombaut is Ms. Benson. Ms. Benson is not here this evening. Ms. Benson is a sixth-grade science teacher at RMS. She's an amazing teacher. We were lucky to get her. She was hired by a couple of top assistant principals at the time. Mrs. Biorde was on her committee and raved about her, and she has not disappointed since getting to Rombaut. She has innovative lessons, works hard to create engaging things for students, she's kind, she's caring, she's compassionate. She runs our environmental club as well as student council, and she's also involved in coaching for the district with Mr. Giometta, so it is my pleasure to also recommend her for tenure. The next one I really don't want to do. She's not here tonight, and that's Mrs. Manson, and I've been dreading this day for a while. I truly do have an amazing counseling team at Rombaut Middle School, and Ms. Manson is one of the key components to that team. She was hired 25 years ago by Mr. McCary at Rombaut Middle School, and she's been serving Rombaut Middle School in the role and capacity of a guidance counselor for those 25 years. She has had students and has now had students' students, so she is a generational guidance counselor, and she has gained the respect of the Beacon community with her approach to counseling. She is professional, she's kind, she's caring, she's compassionate, she has an open-door policy, she never turns a parent away, she gets back to the phone calls, the emails, she's out in the hallway, she's in the lunchroom. If there's an issue, she's going to meet the kids. She doesn't come in frustrated, she doesn't get upset. She worked hard for all 25 years in Beacon to make sure that students were first and that she was meeting their needs. I really don't want her to leave. I've begged her for the last three to rescind her retirement, but I wish her all the best in her retirement, and if she ever decides that she wants to step back in, we would welcome her with open arms and do whatever we could to have her back at Rombaut. I wish her all the best. I hope she stops by and sees us. She truly has been an amazing person. We will not be able to replace her, but we will definitely move on in a positive direction. But she is not replaceable at Rombaut Middle School. Her and Lisa do an amazing job together, and I am very sad to see her go.
I just want to read two quick things of retirement. Karen Pagano was not able to be here. She, one of her retirees is Mary Ann Corbett, so I just want to read what she said. Mary Ann started in Beacon Schools as a food service worker in the '93-'94 school year. She's worked at several schools, including Beacon High School, Rombaut Middle School, and South Avenue. She worked under the longtime direction of Darlene Mazacon at the middle school. She attributes her success in cooking training to Darlene and most recently to Tara Beardsley. Mary Ann retired due to care for her sick husband. She's very grateful for the opportunity. She had to work with students, staff, and faculty of the Beacon Schools, and wants to thank her mentors and colleagues for this opportunity for so many years, so we wish her well in her retirement. Scott Welsh, our Director of Technology, could not be here, so I wanted to speak about Ron Finell. Ron Finell joined the Beacon Tech Department in May of 2019 with the one-to-one initiative, I'm sorry, I can't even read her, as well as our cloud backup and disaster recovery plan. The department was in need of another position in their networking team. Ron, in the four years that Ron has been with us, he has assisted the department through the pandemic with our off-site internet filtering as well as monitoring. Ron has been a point of contact for several IT projects in the district and has lent his expertise in the planning and execution. Scott became the Director of Technology this past September, and in that year had worked with Ron and found him to be highly respected and knowledgeable network specialist, and the Beacon City School District will miss him and wish him luck in his future endeavors. And lastly, I just want to mention four individuals, two from the Facilities Department and two from Central Office that retired during this year. James Jones from Rombaut and Marta Britto, both were in the Facilities Department for 2019. twenty years. Jill Gilbert and Kelly Pology from the District Office. Jill was with us eight years, and Kelly Pology for seventeen years. So we wish them well as well in retirement. And I'd like to mention that there is cake in the cafeteria, so I want to welcome everyone to go and...
Before you go.
Uh-oh. Okay.
I have a long speech. No, I'm just kidding. I just want to say two things. One is, to the retirees, just personally, I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for what you've done for the community and the district. It's really inspiring to be in your presence tonight and hear everything that was shared about you, so thank you. To the folks getting tenure, be like them. And that's why we have this night together, right? So you have some really high goals to work towards, so thank you all, and thanks for being here tonight, too.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so on with cake, so we can all congratulate each other. I'll see you in the cafeteria.
I'm just gonna go through this stuff without Kristin because it does not require her. Our students school board representatives are not here. There are no notes to review on the agenda. Can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session to review the employment history of a particular individual and to discuss attorney-client advice? And the board will return in about a half hour.
So, second.
Alina, second. Myunis, comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I'm also in favor of passing seven to zero. Okay.
Alright, let's do it.
Resume the meeting. Matt, would you like to give your superintendent's report?
Yes. Just a big thank you for, we did our second district commendation ceremony tonight. Vicki Jackson, I want to thank you for putting it together. It was just a great, it was a great celebration of just like a really cool assortment of students and staff who do amazing work here in our community. And then tonight to honor our tenured recipients and our retirees was awesome too. We're in the midst of moving up in graduation ceremonies, so we had three today. We had Glenham Sargent and South Avenue did their fifth grade moving ups and they were all amazing ceremonies. Tomorrow we have Forestill and then eighth grade behind the high school. Weather's supposed to be nice tomorrow, so we're, you know, looking at every single weather update for the high school. The Thursday night is high school graduation. The rain date is Friday and, but we are preparing for, if it's just like bad weather that, you know, we can move indoors if we need to. But we're taking that one day at a time. But we're taking that one day at a time, so we'll figure that out as we go. But just a huge thanks to our staff for all the effort that goes into these last few days to make them memorable for students. Just briefly, also, I notified the board of this via email, but the board sort of tasked me with creating a holiday name review committee focused on the Columbus Day holiday. The, one of the, one of the sort of assignments for the committee was to sort of have it, I don't, I hate saying evenly divided, but to have it, you know, sort of equally represented for people who want to keep the name the same and people who are interested in changing the name. We had three really great meetings, very, you know, a lot of time people gave to the process, good conversation. However, we weren't able to achieve any sort of consensus in the meeting, so each member of the committee is going to kind of write, probably on the brief side, but write like their own report to the board. I'm collecting those over the next few weeks. So I've been talking with Meredith about at some meeting in the summertime, the board picking it up as a conversation, so she'll let you know when that happens. And at that conversation, I could speak more about the committee, but I just wanted to provide that update. They, and just a huge thanks to those members. They, you know, gave a lot of their time, took time away from their families, kids, et cetera, to do it. So I wanted to provide that update. And then lastly, speaking of someone who's been taking time away from their family, I want to take a moment and just thank Craig Wolf. It's his last board meeting with us tonight. So Craig, I, I'm super hesitant to say this because I'm going to get it wrong and you're going to correct me, but you have spent the last seven, or eight, seven years?
Seven, eight, something in there.
Okay, all right. And you? Not, not that it's about me, but you're on the committee that hired me, so I'm always thankful to those folks for bringing me here. But I just want to say a huge thank you to Craig for, you know, just A, the time you've given the district over those years, not just in meetings like this, but Craig was always a super active committee member, facilities, audit, on and on, like always active in those committees, ran audit for the last couple of years, always super involved in the facilities part as well. Well, can always count on Craig to give the historical perspective on something, really deep question, really deep analysis on things, always kind of pushing me to think further about stuff and to do more. So Craig, I just want to thank you personally. And your family's here tonight?
Yes.
Which is super cool. And I always share the story that, you know, my dad was a board member for one term, and that was the only term my mom let him run for. She, she shut down his political operation after one term, but I'm always thankful to families for, you know, letting go and giving up, you know, a family member to us for all that time. If you add up all the time, Craig, over the last seven, eight years, it's a lot. So thank you from my, from my chair for everything you've done.
Thanks.
That's it.
I do have a question for you.
Yeah.
About school meals. Do we have any, or maybe this is more for Anne Marie, do we have any firm answer yet about whether or not we're qualifying for the free school meals?
I think I could answer this.
Oh, good.
But then, get ready to get up. So New York State passed legislation that would provide school meals for, for school districts that meet a certain criteria. It's not your percent of free and reduced lunch, it's your percent of, what's it called? Verify it?
Direct certifications.
Direct certification percentage. So is it 40% the state has as the bar?
Yes, and I think we're at...
We're at 33. So we're hovering around 50% in free and reduced rate for the district. Direct certification, our families that qualify for free and reduced lunch through Medicaid, through...
SNAP.
SNAP benefits, like things, things where they, they don't have to apply, they just directly get it. Our number for that is about 33%, so we're not at the 40% that the state is requiring. There is a chance that this changes and the bar gets lowered, so Beacon would qualify. I think that's more up to the federal government at this point than the state. When we spoke to Karen Pagano about it, Karen felt like it could happen this summer. Karen is preparing just in case. So, you know, we've talked about this before, but everything you see about universal free meals, it just has this huge impact on everyone. So our hope is that the federal government, working with states who are trying to do this, that we're able to lower it. Yeah, so, so our direct certification percentage in Beacon is about 30, 32, 33%. It needs to be above 40 for us to qualify. So it's hard to miss things by a small amount. In terms of the advocacy part, I'm not totally sure who the advocacy goes to on this. Karen seemed to think it was more of a federal thing at this point, I think.
Right.
But we can talk about that further.
Well, that's for sure. Disappointing. Thank you, though. Okay, moving on to board comments. Semra, do you have any comments tonight?
I don't.
That's fine. You don't have to. But I will always offer you the opportunity. Kristin?
I will try to be brief, but Craig and I were appointed at the same time, and I actually have a picture somewhere on my phone, which I will send to you, of the marquee with our names on it after our appointment. And I feel like it felt like, I know Matt's talking about like all of the very nice things and the work we've all been part of, but, and, and it's not at all to revisit like a less than optimal time, but being in the auditorium tonight, where a lot of our board meetings were moved to because we had such big crowds, and staying till one or two in the morning for months. And so there's not many of us that were originally a part of that left, and it's very bittersweet that you're leaving because you played such an important part in that. And I feel like it's already happening, where it's like, this is, this is the dynamic. Like, I would get very emotional, and Craig would be very calm. And I just, I'm really grateful that when we needed, you know, people to step up, like you volunteer so much around the community, and you stepped up and did this work, and always remind us when we're not following open meetings law. And that's the, the former reporter in here. But it's, it, there's, you've done, I think we can see tonight from that lovely ceremony, like how much of a difference has been made. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Eunice?
Yes, thank you. I just, I want to say congratulations to the third graders on a great performance at this year's Calico Ball, which happened a couple of Fridays ago. It's actually, it's 33rd year, which is pretty amazing, and thank you to all involved in putting that together. I also wanted to congratulate all the students moving up from fifth to middle school and eighth graders going into high school. And lastly, a big congratulations, especially because my daughter's graduating this year as well, to all the graduating, to the graduating class. I wish them the best in their future endeavors, and I hope everyone enjoys their summer. That's it, thank you. And I also want to say thank you to Craig. It's been nice working with you, and I wish you luck with all your free time on Monday.
He's at the Hallowen's Deli, so a lot of places.
But I'll see you in town.
Craig, do you have any comments?
Yes, but they might be a little more lengthy than usual.
Take your time.
And, and I will finish with a story. A story about a bulldog. So it's, it's really been a great seven or eight years, I'm not sure exactly what, I came in as part of a class of two with, with Kristin by appointment. When the board was experiencing a lot of ferment and turmoil, and as I recall, a couple of people resigned from the board at a particular time, such that the remainder of the board now had the problem of filling a couple of vacancies at once. And right now, we have the challenge of filling one vacancy, inasmuch as John Galloway has resigned, and I'm sorry to see John go. And I appreciate all the good work that has been done by the other colleagues on this board, who have now gone along the way the deer departed, and some of whom continue to express their interest in the district in one way or another. It's been very good working with, with Matt, and I think that was the right decision, still is, and I hope it will continue to be for a long time. And I know Matt has apologized at times for not being perfect in all of his appointment recommendations, not all of them worked out super well, but they, most of them have worked out very well. And I would say, if this were baseball, you know, a 300 batting average is considered damn good, and you're somewhere around 900 plus, so I think you can put on your ball cap and be proud. And we have a great staff here, got some wonderful teachers, we said goodbye to many of them, and gave tenure to many of them tonight. This is one of the favorite meetings. And I think that one thing that we've learned over the years is about tenure, which is that you don't always give it to everybody, but that's an important lesson to learn, because it used to be that it was kind of like default, you're going to get tenure, you know, everybody gets tenure. And we, we broke that pattern a few years ago for, for reasons. But tenure is very important, especially in this day and age, because there are districts in this country where teachers are saying, I've had it, I'm hanging it up, I can't stand it anymore, I can't take the crap, and the lack of respect for people who have different opinions than they do. So tenure is very important, because it was originally there to protect people against political acts and repression and oppression and all that. So I have to say that I've been very pleased with the teaching staff here over the years. And my daughter, who's here tonight, is actually one of the few students who's actually been to five out of the six schools. Started pre-K with Mr. Dom over at Glenham.
He's at the Hallowen's?
Then it was Forestal, and then we moved, and so she wound up at Sargent, and then Rambout and Beacon High. So I made five out of six. Couldn't quite squeeze in South Avenue. It's, it's a very strong district and getting stronger, and I think we've all been part of making it that way. There's much to be done. I feel sad in a way to leave and to retire, but, you know, there's, there's many things that, that we still need to do, and I think everybody here has a pretty good sense that we're on a good track, and we need to stay that way. I congratulate the new members of this board for their bravery in deciding to take it on. That's, we've had a pretty easy time of it, I would say, in terms of the public support. There were only a few difficult meetings along the way. We've had some very difficult challenges to get through, though, like the great mold experience here in this building, a few boilers that went down in opportune times. We've had any number of personnel issues come before us, that's what we spend most of our time on in those mysterious executive sessions. Can't talk about particulars, but when they say personnel or the particular history of an individual, that's mostly what it is. And that's because people are people. And we have our issues. So I wanted to say that we have a very strong committee structure on this board, and I think the strength of a lot of organizations is in its committees, because that's where you get down into the details about things that are just, would take all night to talk about otherwise. I'm very happy to have served on the committee that originally started its public relations back when Kenya Gadston was on the board. And I remember, I'm sorry, Anthony White's not here tonight, he sent me a nice text message, by the way. But after one of those meetings, when we were considering, do we need to continue the public relations committee, Anthony said, well, why don't we get into some advocacy? I said, boy, I've been thinking the same thing, we really ought to be speaking up and advocating for some things, and we haven't really been doing that. And so it became the Public Relations Advocacy and Legislative. The Legislative, because that's mainly where you need to advocate, but it's also advocating for public education in general, including to some people who may have forgotten why we have it. It's what makes this country great. So I commend Flora for the great work that she's been doing on that committee. It's really moved forward a lot. I'm very happy with having served on facilities and operations, two capital programs, one completed and one we're in the middle of. Unlike some districts, this one takes care of its properties on a regular, methodical basis, and we do it strategically so as to minimize the impact on the, the tax structure. We might not always be able to do that, but so far, so good. We think ahead. We have the Audit and Finance Committee. When I came on the board, it was one meeting a year to meet with the external auditors. We've come a long way. We now have several meetings a year. And we also have an internal auditor, which is a firm that helps us figure out what to do to make things better. So we've already met with them and received one report and have others in the hopper. So that's also a big step forward, is that we took advantage of a state law that allows us to have some community volunteers on the Audit and Finance Committee, which is not true of, of other committees, but in this case, you can find people with some fiscal expertise and ask them to serve on that committee. We have two members who have come on and have continued to serve, so I hope that that continues. So if, as I look back, I see an awful lot of progress, and I'm not going to take credit for all of it, I'm going to give credit to a district that, that keeps coming up with people who want to serve on this board. Although I will say, I'm a little concerned when I see there's like no contest for an election, does that mean that if those people hadn't run, we'd be scrambling for more appointments? Or would somebody else have stepped up and said, I'll do it? Okay? So also, I'm a little disturbed at times when I see there's nobody in the audience, you know? I remember those times in the auditorium with hundreds of people. It doesn't have to be like that, but I'm always grateful when members of the public come in and talk to us. We talked a little bit, as Matt did, about the question about the Columbus Day, Indigenous Peoples' Day. My own opinion is that this is going to be very difficult if we take one ethnic group and throw them under the bus for the sake of some other ethnic group. We need to give some recognition to everybody, and there are other major ethnic groups in this district that we haven't really even talked about. And I think that should be maybe a focus for the future, is widening that discussion to talk about, how do we handle everything? Because it's not just the one versus the other. I wanted to say, one of the last things I said at the Finance Committee meeting was that we should be keeping better track of data and researching more about the kind of things that are affecting our finances. We can see some of them, and other times, we just have to wait till the state legislature restarts the clock and tells us what they're going to give us. But there are things like, what is our combined wealth ratio? What's going to happen to that? How will that affect state aid? How will our tax base be affected? We're very fortunate. This is a very rare district where the reputation of the district, if you go back seven or eight years ago, was really kind of poor. We had schools that were on lists that you don't want to be on, we had a graduation rate that was subpar, we had, of course, the famous situation of the rolling rotating superintendents. And we, we managed to get through a lot of these things, and we're going to face a future, I think, that gives us a challenge of when, if ever, do we need to consider asking the taxpayers of this district to go beyond the nominal 2% tax cap levy? I will tell you again, I have never been a fan of the tax cap, for the same reason I never believed the story about the Dutch boy who put his finger in the dike and saved the Netherlands from the flood. That's a fantasy. Trying to stop inflation is a fantasy. Inflation is now running somewhere around 5%. I think it hit something like 8%. I remember during the Carter administration, there was a month when it hit 13%. Not that I'm blaming Jimmy Carter, I don't blame presidents for the economy, they don't run the economy. We don't have an economic czar. We have an economy, which is all of us. So the idea that we can put the halt to inflation is a nice fantasy thought, but it just has recently been proved to not be true. This means we're going to have employee groups that are going to be looking at their personal pocketbooks, and we'll have contracts coming up. There are challenges ahead of us. So I'm happy to say that we didn't have to consider that at any time in the past, but one of the reasons is that ever since the tax cap came into being, it was very low inflation. And that is a rather long trend of low inflation that I don't think you can guarantee would be reflected in the future. be reflected in the future. So I wish you all luck with that one. So I promised you a story. So many years ago, I was a reporter for one of the several news organizations here, and the political parties in Beacon were kind of more diversified than they are today. And there were some conservatives who decided to run for office. One of them was a guy by the name of Barney Cohen. I think his name was Benjamin, but everybody knew him as Barney. He owned a business called Beacon Salvage. And he would be the last guy in the world who would be appreciating being called Green because his politics were not. But he was legitimately in the business of recycling scrap metal. So he was one of the early recyclers, to be frank. And he lived on Long Dock, and his salvage yard was on Long Dock. It's long gone, it's Sandy Hudson's beautiful park right now, but I remember how it looked at that time. Barney's house was there, surrounded by an eight-foot-high steel chain-link fence. To give you a little bit of a clue. And some people would say the salvage yard was a junkyard. And he had a dog, a junkyard dog. And I had to go interview Barney. And I said, how am I going to get to his house? There's this chain-link fence around it. So I'm greeted by a bulldog, comes running up like a bullet, barking at a storm, just a little dog with a big bark. And he was just like a little meatball of muscle and bone and teeth with a bulldog collar. And I said, oh, I'm sure glad for that fence. And so I assumed that the dog was a substitute for a doorbell, because anybody in the house could not help but hear this dog. And the dog, I talked to him and tried to talk nice to a dog, and apparently I succeeded because his mood changed to slightly playful, and he went to get his ball.
Oh.
It was a bowling ball. A regulation-sized bowling ball that he had managed to get his teeth into. Carried it up and showed it to me, and then he shook it. And then he dropped it, and I guess that passes for a bulldog smile. And I can't honestly tell you exactly what Barney Cohen said, or if I ever actually got to talk to him that way. I don't remember. All I remember is that little bulldog. So what does this have to do with us? Well, our mascot is a bulldog. Recently, I heard somebody question whether that was a good idea for a mascot. I'll tell you, I think it is. Dogs are loyal, they're tough, they're vigilant, and this little bulldog just exemplified all the most positive dog qualities, other than a little bit of extra aggressiveness. But after all, he's a junkyard dog. So I would say that we in Beacon, being a small city, but a proud one, and I think that most people who've been in Beacon for a while know that you don't talk bad about Beacon to an old Beaconite, they'll give it right back to you. And if somebody talks bad about my town, we'll give it right back to them. And there are many people around this region right now who are kind of jealous of Beacon because they used to call it a dog of a town, and now they're wondering how we did what we did. So I'm thinking bulldog is still a good mascot for our little town. Our district is not the biggest district, but we often punch above our weight, and we have some very good things to be proud of. So I say, let's keep the bulldog, and remember to be bulldog loyal, bulldog tough, bulldog strong.
That was a lot of information, Craig. We don't have to digest all that.
That was a classic.
Thank you, yes. Thank you, thank you. Alina, did I pass you over?
Yeah, that's okay.
Do you have any comments? I'm sorry.
I just want to say that congratulations to all the teachers and everyone who retired and wished them all the best, and those that received tenure. It's nice to be on this side and looking out and seeing all of that, and just being inspired and happy that I chose a district that I chose out of just looking at the size of it and just saying, you know what, this has got to be better, and sending my kids to Poughkeepsie because we came from little tuckoals, I'm like, they'd be too big there. And it was, I feel like every decision I make in my life, my family's life, to me is a blessing. I was led that way, so I'm just happy to be a part of Beacon and on the board. Congratulate you, Craig. I don't know if I'll ever be as long, like, have the knowledge that you have and just the experience that you have is amazing. So I appreciate you sharing your stories and making me feel comfortable my first couple of meetings. It's very important to have someone like that on your team to make you feel important. So thank you. And that's about it?
Thank you, and I apologize.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Flora. Yeah, so yeah, Craig, it was always, it was always great to have you on the board when I joined, because you were always patient and generous with your time and kind, and I really appreciate that. And I am really thrilled that Public Relations Advocacy and Legislative Committee exists, and I thank you for making that happen, and I'm happy to follow in your footsteps. So thank you. I wanted to also congratulate all the staff on their retirements and their tenures. In particular, I wanted to congratulate Joe and Marissa at Rambout Middle School. My son loves both of you. You've had such a huge impact on his life, and you make him feel confident, and I, for that alone, you're like worth a million bucks to me, so thank you. I did want to talk a little bit about the Dutchess County School Board Association had a dinner, and everything is all mushed together now because it's June, I think it was earlier this month. And they did presentations by students who had participated in the SEAL of Civic Readiness programs in their districts. And this was the most impressive batch of students. I mean, they had a student who is going to Harvard to do neuroscience and government majors, a student who's going to do math and childhood education at Marist, one going into the Coast Guard, another one studying history on a pre-law track. Like, these kids, like, they knew what they wanted, and they were, they were just so focused. They talked about the projects that they were doing, which included exploring the impacts of climate change, border and immigration issues, rising cost of college tuition, underfunded libraries. And that one in particular, they did a book drive that was so successful with these book drop boxes all around town that they're going to keep doing it in the town. I mean, it was just incredible. And one of the students had a quote, which I thought was great. They said, "With knowledge comes power to make positive change," and that the civic seal takes you from the project to a national stage, which was just really cool to hear. So you, you had mentioned that that was something that this district is going to be taking on, so I'm so excited to see that happen. And then also, I just wanted to flag that we are adding three NISBA resolution drafts to New Business tonight, just for us to look at and sign on to in, you know, in principle. We will vote on the final language at the next meeting. And I'm sorry it's so last minute, but the drafts were just completed today, so that's why it's very last minute. But they are about supports for serving preschool students with special needs. And that's it for me.
Thank you. Craig, I want to address you first. I think I asked you to run when I first ran for board, and for whatever reason, you declined. I can't imagine why anyone declined at that time, it was such a chaotic time. But I was really pleased when you and Kristin were appointed to the board, and I can't, you know, everyone's said, what a great board member you've been, and you've been super diligent, and just the institutional knowledge that you've brought has been really important, especially in such a chaotic time, to have someone who's like, well, this is, this is why this happened, or this is what happened before, we've really relied on you. So thank you for your dedication, and I promise to be the watchdog and exec from now on without you there, to move conversations into the public as soon as they belong there. And I hope you enjoy your, yeah, your free time, and thank you to your family for giving you the time.
Thank you.
And it's so, and it's so nice to be saying goodbye to you in such a calm time. I think it's really hard for people to imagine what it was like during those days, but I do think that it's important to remember it because we don't want to go back there ever. Yeah. A couple of notes to people. I also want to say thank you, Matt, for organizing the commendation ceremony. It's so great. It's such a, it's such a heartwarming thing to hear these, you know, really intimate stories about everyone, and you really just realize how everyone is giving something special to make this district the incredibly special place that it is. And congratulations to all the tenure and retirement people. I did want to mention to everyone that there is an article about Ms. P. in the high school newspaper, this issue, which I'm sure you can get through the website. It's, you know, and again, it all sort of feels very full circle to me because I just feel like, here's someone who gave 37 years of her life to this district, and that was, that was what drew me to being involved in this district, is feeling like, there are such dedicated teachers, they deserve better than this. And now to have a forum for students to be talking about it, you know, that didn't exist before. So just, it does feel like there is progress, and it's really important as board members to remind ourselves of that, because sometimes it feels like a bit of a grind, I will admit. Things to look forward to this summer. We are changing years at the next meeting. I'm not going to presume to continue as president, but I would like for the board to see, to talk about new legal, RFPs for new legal counsel, the Columbus Day conversation, the fireman's tax credit, and what we're going to do with our empty board seat. So we will figure out how to get those on the agenda. And the last thing I wanted to ask is, we do need to have a policy committee meeting. I'm wondering if our policy members could make July 10th.
I'm so glad I'm not on that committee. Yes, I could do that.
Yeah, you miss you free. Matt, does that work for you?
Yeah.
Okay. So it'll be, we can decide if it's going to be at 6:00 or 7:00, but we'll have a policy committee in the afternoon. I think that's all I had. Let me just confirm.
And will we get, we haven't, we'll get like specific stuff?
We will. We're going to talk about the code of conduct. I will connect with Vicky so we can get what we need, because there's a few policies.
Sure.
Old policies, and then code of conduct. And we were going to begin the conversation about a phone policy.
Yeah, if there's time. I know we have to get that other stuff in.
Yeah. I don't think there's huge changes to the code of conduct, so I don't think that will take up the majority of the meeting.
Okay.
Okay. So moving on to New Business, do you want to make a motion to talk about the?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to discuss the drafts of the three NISBA resolutions regarding supports for preschool students with special needs.
Is there a second?
Some of.
Oh.
Wait, oh, second, sorry.
She's, so Flora made the motion, Kristin is seconded. Are there questions or comments?
Well, so I guess I should explain myself. So we, the Dutchess County School Board Association, we've sort of made this mini-committee, and we've been meeting about putting together resolutions jointly and what that would look like and how it would work. And it's sort of all fell together that the first resolution and the one that had the most sort of impetus behind it were these supports for preschool students. So we met, and many thanks to Carolyn Bobic, is it Bobic or Bobic?
I say Bobic.
Okay, Bobic. Carolyn Bobic at NISBA, who also joined us and sort of helped explain the finer points. And after a lot of discussion with different districts and with experts, we determined that there were three big buckets that we really wanted to focus on in terms of resolutions. So one was, and I emailed this to all of you guys as well, so if you want to look at it, but one was the flexibility around, around the education services for preschool students with special needs under Section 4410. Another was about the funding for these services. And then the last one was restoring the sunsetting resolution about cost shifting. And I'll be completely honest and say, like, I was the least informed of the group in this discussion, and my goal really was to get, to sort of get the process in place where we start signing on to these resolutions together. But I mean, after hearing the discussion from everyone else and the research that was done, I felt strongly that we could get behind these drafts. And even though there's still a little bit of work being done, and we can vote on the final version at the, at the next meeting, I wanted to at least give them a first read. I'm not going to go through the rationale, rationale parts of them, just because it's a little bit longer, but I will read the three resolutions.
Hang on. So I just want to vote on putting it on the agenda after your explanation. So everyone?
Yeah.
On favor of the discussion?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
All right. Anyone oppose?
Aye.
Okay. I am also in favor, pass the seven to zero. Okay.
Yeah, interrupt whenever we're doing things out of turn. Okay. So that NISBA supports changes to the regulations regarding the provision of preschool educational services to special needs students under Section 4410 in order to remove specific barriers to the efficient and effective delivery of these services. And then below, it sort of lays out what some of those barriers have traditionally been considered. And then the next resolution is that NISBA will advocate for an update to the rates established for compensating providers for preschool services provided to students with special needs, exceptionalities. And again, there's, the rationales are below in the document. And then the final is, NISBA opposes shifting financial responsibility for preschool special education from counties to school districts. So a few notes on these. The reason why we're tracking changes is because we are sort of working on these documents with other districts. In principle, these are the resolutions in their current form, but I would love anybody's feedback or thoughts about the way they're written, what other considerations there should be, and what other information that we should be including. But I think what I, I mean, aside from gathering your feedback, I would also like to know if we would be willing to sign on to these and submit these. Because the way it works is every district who wants to sign on to the same resolution, every district has to submit them. So, and this is all kind of a new process for us, but would everybody be, like, do I need to pass a motion to ask, like, how?
I think we can go for consensus right now. I don't know that we need to.
So is that something that everybody would be amenable to doing, to submitting these resolutions, once they're in their final form?
And we can still also submit resolutions just from Beacon.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And we have some resolutions.
And we'll discuss those at the next Praw meeting.
Yeah.
Next, next time we meet. And the other thing to note is, we can have different rationales for these resolutions. It's just that the wording of the resolution portion has to be exactly the same. So if people want to contribute to it, you know, offline later, like, the documents are here, and they're like living documents, so please work on them as is. I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention to say, hey, this is something we're trying, and these are the first ones that are going to be out of the gate. And I wanted to make sure everybody supported them in principle. So that's it.
Thank you for all the work on that floor. Yeah. Also, I think it's great that districts are working together to submit resolutions.
Yes. I have to say, this has been the work of many, many people, and many thanks to Gully at Bozies and to the Poughkeepsie School District for all their work on this as well. So, yeah, yeah.
Awesome. Okay.
Just from our standpoint, the pre-K issue is huge, and, you know, I'm not trying to open up a conversation on it right now, but it's really a problem, and there's many meetings internally where we all get really frustrated with the current state, but it's beyond Beacon.
100%.
And really a statewide issue, but it's kind of based through each county. And so I'm very appreciative of this.
Oh, good.
Yeah, it's something that's really, needs to be addressed at a Yeah, it's, it's something that's really, needs to be addressed at a countywide level, for sure.
If you happen to have any more rationale that you want to add to it, given your direct experience, I think that would be really helpful, because this is actually, that's actually one of the shorter lists.
I would ask Heather.
Yeah, Heather.
Yes, fire away, please.
She's intimately involved in this on a daily basis.
Sure. Perfect.
Thank you.
Yeah, because we're going to be meeting before reorg to finalize all of these, but if you have, but anything you can add before would be great. Okay, so, so, we good?
So adjourned this year.
All right. So the last thing is the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. Is there anything that anyone would like to have pulled from the consent agenda? Okay. Can I have a motion? Just to note that there's a revised board meeting calendar. We changed the two meetings in August, and I think there's a meeting in the spring that's also changed. You might just take a peek at that. So can I have a motion to approve 11.01 through 15.10?
So moved.
Flora, is there a second? Second by Alina. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. I'm also in favor, pass the seven to zero. Thank you very much for the donation. Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Craig, why don't you do it?
Second. Second by Eunice. All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. Pass the seven to zero. Everyone have a great night.
Craig, you too. Have a sleep well tonight.
Yeah.